Good morning, everybody. And welcome to our weekly City Council study session. We've got two items on the agenda. First, we're going to have a kind of free discussion on the bid Downtown Business Improvement District contract that expires this year. And secondly, we're going to spend an hour on the Housing Action Plan. Again, kind of a free discussion to talk about next steps and questions that staff might have and that council members might have. So Councilmember Burke is not joining us today, so I think we have everyone else here. And I will just start off with a little bit of context of where we have been. So we're coming, we're in the fifth year of a five-year contract with Downtown Spokane Partnership to administer the Downtown Business Improvement District. And as you might know, the Downtown Business Improvement District has its own governing board and then plus a much larger advisory board. And the DSP collects the money that we've assessed against building owners and businesses in the, within the boundary, and then they spend it on the purposes that we've set out, all sorts of things that are included in the materials, but particularly cleaning and the ambassadors' presence of security and engagement, and then some marketing and other miscellaneous activities. And so since we're at a five-year, it's been five years, many of us have accumulated ideas that we would like to see incorporated into the next contract. And we have a work group, myself, Councilmember Kinnear, and Councilmember Stratton, and we brainstormed on those and we sent a list of those over to the DSP and asked if they could incorporate them into the next contract. And they said yes to all of them, and then they've also provided some information about maybe some ways that they would do it, their initial thoughts about it. I've had, I don't know how many meetings with Mark and Richard, the executive director for, or CEO of DSP, and Roy Cogan, who is the board chair, on these. And so we've kind of worked it out, but we wanted them to present something to you which they've sent to you in writing, and then open it up for your questions about it, and they can clarify things that people want to hear more about. People might have other issues that they want to bring up, and the idea is that after this meeting, we would probably turn it over to the lawyers for the city and DSP to kind of work out actual contract language. So that's a tee-up, and I guess first I would just open it up to council members to any particular questions or concerns or things they want to raise, and they can ask it directly to DSP or any of us on the work group. And then we'll give a chance to DSP to either respond to those, but also just beyond that to generally raise some points at some point. And I see Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Not really a question. We've had so much conversation between DSP and the three of council members. I want to thank Mark for his time and patience as we go through this. It was a little like making sausage and, you know, trying to come up with a solution that works for everybody and not be too prescriptive and making sure that we're doing the best not just for DSP but for downtown. So I do want to thank you and wanted just to let the other council members know that we've had just some very serious conversations, in-depth conversations, and I want to say that we've thought of everything, but some council members may have other things, other questions and other things they've thought of that they want to ask. So thank you, Mark, and Roy, and your team. Appreciate your time.
And before I go to next, just, and we did circulate many of these issues to council and ask them for their input, so this isn't, shouldn't be the first time you've seen it, but it might be the first time that it landed for you. But Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm just looking for some clarity on, and I think I saw maybe a mention of it in an email regarding marketing and what the role of that is going to be going forward with this. And then also, just to express a concern, my biggest concern, I think, of some of those points that were laid out in the, in the contract were specific to the personal protective equipment for the ambassadors downtown. And I spent some time a couple of weeks back, did a walk-along with those ambassadors, and they expressed strong concerns to me for their personal safety over losing those. And that's a big concern of mine. I don't, I don't want to make any decisions that's going to put them at risk. You know, they've got a pretty tough job. They've got to have some authority in their job as well, which I think those vests lends them as well. So just, that's a concern of mine, is losing those protective equipment that they have. And so if we want to make them, you know, a different color or something, something else that kind of gives it a, maybe a little bit gentler touch, I'm fine with that, but I just want to make sure that they remain protected. So those are my, my points.
Great, yeah. And I think everybody in our work group wants them to be protected and feel protected. The question was whether they wear it underneath or something else for the reasons we kind of pointed out, that it makes it, you wonder if people are wearing vests like that, is it scary to be downtown? So can we protect them without that? But that's a great point, and again, all these points that we brought out to the DSP, they're, you know, they're just discussion points. Before I turn it over to Mark to talk a little bit about marketing, I just wanted to frame the discussion on that a little bit because there was some confusion about it. The bid has always wanted to do some marketing, and DSP has some great staff that does marketing. The question, the core of the question is, you know, there are DSP members that are also bid members, but they're a very small amount of the bid members. And so there's a question of transparency of, wait, are these DSP goals? Are they bid goals? And so what we've really been asking for, and we've gotten some information, but we're looking for more, there's two positions. One's a business outreach person, and one is a marketing and events. And we want to be super clear of how much money are bid revenues paying for those positions, and what are their duties as to DSP versus bid, so that everybody's transparent. Because what, I don't know how many of you hear this, but what I hear from various bid members is, hey, the bid's not working for me, it's working for a small group of large landowners. And so that may or may not be true, but there's a perception on that, and I want to make sure that it's completely transparent and that each year the bid governance says, yep, this is how we want to invest our money, as opposed to just being reported, this is how we're doing it. So that's the thing. But I'll turn it over to Mark to try to demystify that a little bit for us.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council, and specifically, thank you, Lori, for those kind words. The, yeah, I think we're getting more clarity in terms of what you were looking for, and do apologize for confusion, and maybe we perpetuated in our response. I think what we tried to do is just be very thorough in our response to you, addressing what early on, and so over a period of a month, we developed that packet that you received, and part of that was to respond to that early on proposal that considered, you all were considering, you know, removing marketing and events from our activities. And so that wasn't meant to bring up old news, it was just meant to address something that you had raised. So again, apologize for that confusion. I think the, absolutely, we can, we can, we can deliver on your request. We, on, as a part of our contract, you probably recall, we have an independent audit of our financials each year, and that is in part to make sure we have good firewalls between those two entities, number one, and we can articulate that for you both. I've got a nice document that I can send you that will give you a high level, how we separate and how we contemplate, like, advertising and promotions for the bid, and then really advocacy, I think, is what you might be talking about. And perhaps, like we heard, there was one concern over our communications or advocacy around the stadium, for instance. We definitely keep firewalls on those dollars, and, and at the end of the day, we can show you that actually the net result is, is that the DSP volunteer membership actually subsidizes the bid employees and those bid functions, not the other way around. We will, on a yearly basis, we deliver you a, a approved and finalized independent audit that we have done by Shadle and Shadle each year, and that comes to you at the end of June each month, so you'll be receiving that within days. And we would love to go through that in detail as much detail as you would want, to make sure that you're comfortable. And like I said, we'll make sure that we're reporting, we're, we'll do a little internal dive, how we can report better out to you on that. And then just on the, on the bid governance part, you know, I think, I think this is, this is a little confusing even for the board members, which is that understanding that we have this separate 501(c)(6) that allows us to engage in modest amount of advocacy, and they all give us tasks and responsibilities that 99% of, I would say they're always in harmony with the big mission, but sometimes the, you know, the individual things like, for instance, the stadium, that wasn't a project that was prioritized or approved by the bid advisory board because, because it's advocacy. And so while we keep the bid advisory board apprised, and they get, every month, they get, each board member gets a copy of our full president's report, which summarizes all of our DSP work as well, including our advocacy, and then we report out on that periodically. But they are absolutely separate, and we will, you know, we'd love to work with you on how do we, how do we improve that? And how do we make sure that you feel confident that we have that separation and that there isn't a conflict?
Mark, could you address the protection for ambassadors before? Can you tell how that came about and what kinds of options you looked at before and what kinds of options are out there now? So again, what, what I'm trying to facilitate here is that we have some, you know, broader policy goals, and yet you and your organization are making them operational. So I'm really trying, and you did, I think, a good job in your response of bringing those operational considerations forward to us. And so I'm just wondering on the current, if you could tell the story of how they came to be, and then what options are there out there that might be less jarring or visible to your average tourist who's wondering, hey, where have I, what block have I stumbled onto? Do I need a vest?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And those are, that's a great question. We get that question from time to time, certainly from some of our customers. So first of all, if you might recall, I think I've shared this before, but just real quickly, I would say they came out of really two, two primary points of pressure. One was the former mayor, who was very adamant when he, I would just use the word, took the precinct away from the core after we worked so hard with him and you all to put the precinct, the initial precinct downtown. And he articulated that we weren't going to get any more officers downtown and that if, and that if we wanted to have a safer downtown, it was up to us to pay for it and us to really strengthen our visible presence, because it was way less expensive to hire ambassadors than it was to hire officers. And, and so that was one pinch point that kind of the vests originated out of. The other one was during that process, engaging with my team and asking them, you know, how, you know, what tools do you need to be effective? And that was, as we were talking about the vests, they said, yes, we, we support the idea of the vest because things are not the same as they were. And I've got employees, as a few of you that did the walk-along saw, that have been with us for 20-plus years. You know, as they will say, you know, we used to deal with folks that were, that were, you know, alcoholics, right? And, and that was kind of the, that was the primary issue. Today, we're dealing with, you know, methamphetamines and fentanyl and some things that just have changed the dynamic and, and not necessarily at the end of the day making any things, well, I would say probably making things a little less safe and certainly less predictable, right? We have, and so, so they said, yes, we would appreciate having the ability to wear a vest, and that's why you'll notice that not every one of my team wears a vest. I make it optional for them. It's not mandatory. Another thing, we went to the gray on the vests specifically so that we could go with a softer color and we could delineate ourselves and differentiate ourselves from law enforcement, because we didn't want to be seen as law enforcement. One of the things that, so there are a couple of quick options. We certainly could move the vests inside the uniform, that was something that we looked at. We opted not to do that, and that was primarily at the request of my team, when they said, well, we looked at these two options, and, and the nice thing about having them external is that I can shed them when it's 90 degrees out and I'm walking the asphalt, I'm walking, you know, 15 miles a day or 25 miles a day on the asphalt for lunch and for my break. And the second is I can carry my gear up on my core as opposed to hanging it on my hips. And it might sound kind of silly, but as, as a manager, I can tell you that I've been dealing with, you know, feet and knee and hip issues since I got here. And so we've made some tactical changes. I have a mandatory, I provide them a shoe allowance, but I mandate that they have a fitted orthotic, for instance, inside their shoe, because I want them safe. And obviously, from a management standpoint, if I take care of them better up, up front, then I have less issues with injury down the road, and we've seen a dramatic improvement there. So we could move those inside, if that's something that the council insists on. I don't, it would not be the preference of my team. But another item that we could do is, when I got here, we stripped the word "security" from my team, and we went from "security ambassador" to "ambassador." As you probably noted, we have added that word "security" back. That's something very simple we can remove. And, and I'm having my team do the research on, there are other bids, our peers, that do some other interesting things that I'd like us to consider. One of those is, for instance, is like, I've seen one bid down in California that just has "ask me" on the back of their, on the back of their uniform, just encouraging people to engage with them. And so I think there's some things we can do to soften this without losing the external vests, but if this is, if this is a sticking point for you, you know, obviously, my next, my next, I might, the compromise I might ask is, please allow us to have them discretionary inside the uniform, because I really worry even from a liability standpoint, if we provided this equipment and then we take it away, if something happens to them, who's responsible? And I fear that our organization would be responsible for that.
Can I ask a quick, quick follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, one of the comments one of the ambassadors made to me during our walk-along was, with regard to the vest, was just a concern that not having them outward-facing would sort of cost them some moral authority with some of the folks that they're dealing with, and, and it's, it's difficult, obviously, with the population that they are engaging with quite often. Is that a, a large concern of yours, or do you think that that's, that's not something that's too big of an issue?
No, I think it's a great point. I think not only do they, are they noticing that they're getting better response, so they're not having to, it's less confrontational, because the uniform tells a story all by itself. So when they engage, one of the things we're going to do, by the way, we're going to add a badge to their uniform, I forgot to mention that, we're going to put their names on there. So, you know, Rick would have his first name on his vest, and so, so a person could engage them by their name, we want them to be a little bit more personable. But yes, I think that what we've noticed is a change in the tone. When we're engaging somebody, we're asking them, please, you know, hey, do you need help? Do you need resources? But we really need you to move out of this doorway so this business can open. There's a different kind of a tone that they experience. And the other thing, which I found rather fascinating, is, is what I hear from my team is, we've been having this discussion, is exponentially, they've noticed that more people approach them. It's actually the opposite of what you might think, as them being non-approachable. More people approach them, and I think, I can't remember which one of you was out with them one day, and they actually had a senior couple approach them, just, hey, you look like you guys might know the answer to that, or something like that, and, and ask them a question about where to find something, where to find the historic Davenport or something. And I, that's what they're noticing on a daily basis. So we do believe it's having a positive impact in that respect, but I think, frankly, I want to find the middle ground, where it makes you happy that we're addressing some of these concerns about the look, and, and quite frankly, from our standpoint, we want a holistic approach. That's been my approach from day one. So if we can soften this a little bit, find the middle.
I saw Karen's hand first, and then Lori.
Hi, Mark. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
At the last bid board meeting, there was discussion from some of the members, we talked a little bit about this, and there was some discussion from some of the business owners that they felt safe, they felt, they don't see a lot of police officers around, so they feel safe when they see the ambassadors. And then one noted that there was a stabbing in March, and I don't know if you have any detail on that, but I'm just curious, because I've been thinking about it since that meeting, is if I'm an ambassador and something like that happens on my beat, on my walk, what's the protocol, and how long did it take for police officers to get there, and did that person feel threatened? I don't know if you can shed any light on that, but I, I think it's interesting to think about what that, what it does to that ambassador, what position it puts that ambassador in.
Yeah, thanks, Councilwoman. So, so I think we do hear, like it or not, we have a limited number of officers that are on the beat at any given time, and they've got so many priorities. And so we believe we, we provide a nice accent or, you know, augmentation of their function. And, and a very important element of that, we can respond to a lot of these situations where a law enforcement officer isn't, isn't available, or perhaps we don't need a law enforcement officer. But they are charging into some events, so contrary, not contrary to, but contrasting with like, say, like, say, a security officer that's, that's guarding a building in downtown, like Securitas or another company. Their, their function is observe and report, okay? And my team reminds me of this all the time. Ours is to observe, report, and engage. And I remind you, again, I can count on one hand, probably less than three fingers, you know, in a, in an annualized basis, when they actually have to engage physically, but they are, they are charging into a situation, so they're not just like picking up the phone, because our customers expect us, because of that delay oftentimes. So on a regular basis, we will be called, hey, listen, we've got somebody that's locked up in the bathroom on the 14th or whatever, 12th floor of the Paulson Building, can you please help us remove that individual? He's scaring our customers, and he's blocking the restroom. And so those are the situations we're in. We're walking down the alley, we're waking up individuals at 7:00 in the morning, they're not happy to be woken up, right? Those kinds of situations. And, and as we know from our work, your work engaging with social services, nearly every one of those folks that are asleep on our sidewalk today are packing some sort of a weapon. And so it, it just, that is the reality. I have to dig to get the actual details, but what I could tell you, there's been a handful of stabbings just in the last year. I think the, the stat you might be referring to is the one I put in my president's report, perhaps, is my team reported that they actually had three incidents where somebody had pulled a knife on them. In the la, this was just since January of this year. And so that's when they're engaging and saying, hey, could you please take that drug use somewhere else? Could you guys, you know, stop, you know, doing this behavior? And some of them are cooperative. So those, and I can, I don't know if those were, I assume they reported to crime check. I will do my best to get you the stats in terms of that response, but that's instantaneous, right? That's like, hey, I'm not going anywhere, pal. And a knife or some sort of a weapon is drawn, and, you know, our team's immediate protocol is to back up and step away from that situation. They do not engage. If they feel like somebody, either that person or somebody else is a harm or at risk, they will call law enforcement, they'll call 911, or they'll report it to crime check.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Just a follow-up.
Oh, sorry.
A quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
We know when they call 911, an average response time?
I don't, but I can certainly try to get it for you.
It's, it's okay. I just, I worry about them. I'm, you know, I agree with Councilmember Cathcart. I think we all care about them, and I, I just worry that we do everything we can to keep them safe and not to put them in situations where they are at danger. I just, it scares me a little bit, but they do, they do good work.
Thank you so much. They'll be glad to hear that, because I share those words that I, with them when I hear those from you guys, and that means a lot to them. Just real quickly, before, Councilmember Kinnear, if you recall, the bit, the more kind of public event that happened a couple of weeks ago, as you know, an incident where an individual clearly was not himself, hurled rocks and busted about $20,000 worth of windows in the downtown area. Our team was first on the scene, and that one unfortunately took about 50 minutes for law enforcement to respond. During that time, my team, when he started to leave, they followed behind him to, as they were calling, crime check, because that was not a 911. And so they're trying to report it, and they're trying to give the information about the individual. He then turns around, picks up some old rocks and comes back, they end up giving him some space, he ends up shattering another window, and fortunately, he ends up sitting down. I don't, again, I don't think he was in right mind, and my team essentially just stood back and monitored him and tried to keep tabs on him until law enforcement showed up. And so that's the kind of incident, if that individual didn't like the fact that he was being monitored, he could have turned at any given time and gotten aggressive with my team.
And before Councilmember Kinnear goes, that's so strange, because police reported that they had no idea that the person was still there, so I'm, there's some kind of breakdown. They thought, oh, it happened, there's no suspect, it's not there, so we're not going to show up. So I'm glad your team was there. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. I, I guess, I too went on a ride along, Jacoby and I went on a ride along with your folks, and they expressed the same thing that we're hearing, is, you know, having a vest heightens their security, having it on top means...
their security, having it on top means they can put all their equipment there, and then when they're on their break, they can just, you know, take it off, because it's not, as you said, 90 degrees. And I too don't want them to be unsafe, I want them to be safe. And I think there's probably some miscommunication over what council, I'm going to put that in air quotes, what council thinks that the ambassadors, what council thinks the ambassadors should wear. And so I think a few councilmembers did want to have the stab vest underneath, or not at all. But I never thought that that was a good idea. I just want to be on the record of saying that. And I like your idea of the "Ask Me," or other things that make them approachable, because when they're downtown, you do want people to come up and talk, and ask questions, and engage. That's part of their job as well. So, let's not, let's not rush into changing what they're wearing before we have a discussion as council, because I don't think everybody's in agreement on that.
Yep, that's why we're having the conversation. One of the things, Mark, you and I have discussed, is not having each ambassador the same way, because I think there's a lot of purposes. So one is for business owners and tourists, and then the other is, how can they be more effective reaching out to people who are in distress and getting them into services? And so, the, the vest and the security is an obstacle to those folks seeing them as helpers. And so we talked a little bit about maybe deploying some ambassadors in a, in a different approach, as opposed to patrol, more of an engagement with a social work background and things like that. So I just wanted to raise that. But my other question is, I'm concerned that we're not paying the ambassadors, or the clean green team enough at a starting wage, and I'm just wondering if you can tell us what their starting hourly wage is currently.
Sure, great question. Well, we share that concern. I would tell you that wages have probably, for them, have gone up probably $5 an hour in the last three years. And, you know, so their current starting wage is, for both teams, is $16 an hour. That's as, that's effective as of about two weeks ago, after we did a kind of an analysis. Prior to that, it was $15 an hour, and then we have a six-month stair step to $15.50 if they're meeting their goals, and then after one year, it was $16. So basically, we just moved that up another dollar. I would also say that one of the things that we had to do, and it's a great thing, don't get me wrong, but for a nonprofit, on unlimited budget, it's a little challenging, is, you know, we are offering benefits to the vast majority. When I came here, we had one, and one lead that had benefits, the rest of them were part-time, 35 hours a week intentionally, so that we didn't have to pay them benefits. Over the course of the last eight years, I have moved, now we have about 70% of the clean and safe team all have benefits, full benefits, medical, dental, optical, and that's, and that's 100% paid for for them. And then their family members can participate if they choose, and then they also have the ability for a 401K, 3%, match 401K, or an IRA. And so, that's, and we're offering that, obviously, as we're hiring today, because that's the marketplace. We need to attract good talent. The other thing I would just add real quick is, is that we share the desire, we, as I mentioned in my report, we've, we've previously, like, six months ago, or four months ago, we met with the head of your mental health behavioral team in law enforcement, to counsel with him about how could, what could we do, could we collaborate, should we consider hiring a social worker, what do they think? And they gave us some great ideas. We've been, been in conversations with Frontier Behavioral Health, Crystal over there, about is there a possibility for an internship or a partnership? But the, but the upshot of that is, we love the idea, we've seen our peers do it in other communities, the challenge is, is money, right? We, and we'll talk a little bit about our, the reasons for maybe how we got to a surplus reserve right now. Right now, we can afford to bring on a social worker, which would probably cost us notably more than what we're paying our, you know, our entry-level ambassador. It's just the sustainability. But, so we're in those conversations, absolutely.
All right, great. I have one final thought I want to share, but I want to see if there are any other things that council wants to, we're kind of near the end, well, we are near the end of our time, bleeding into the next, but since we've got everyone here. Anything else that anyone wants to bring up of note, that they haven't seen in writing? Councilmember Stratton.
I just want to say that I support Councilmember Kinnear and her comments about the ambassadors and the look. I, I think it's, I don't know if, what different sides we're on here as a council, but I think at this, at this day and age, unfortunately, it's the reality that we have people that are in organizations, in places like malls and downtown, that are there to protect people, and are there to answer questions, and do all of that, but they have to look a certain way. And so, I support Councilmember Kinnear's comments. And I would also support anything, or any further discussions of what we might be able to do on salaries and hourly wages and that kind of thing, to bring those up.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, and I have appreciated the discussion. I do know that my concern will be the ongoing training for our ambassadors, and how they interact with our unhoused and homeless people, and how they are identified in conversations, and not billified by the bid members downtown. That would be critical in partnerships, and so I would truly support compensation that will allow that for them going forward, and continue to work on the bid's partnership with social service groups. I, I think we've made some improvements this year, but I think there is continued work to be done in that arena.
Great, thanks. Okay, I'll just finish up, Mark, I, with one thing, and then, we're kind of out of time, but I'll let you give some closing words, because I know you've been really anxious to get this moving forward, and we are moving forward, which is good, and I think we're on track to renew the contract in a better way. But I did just want to do this, because I, over all the years, when I've heard from Mark and his team, they feel caught in the middle between, they're asked to deliver so many services, they, you know, the place needs to be clean, we need to have ambassadors, we need marketing, and yet, they only have as much money as the bid assessments come up to. And so I just wanted to be crystal clear, that nobody expects DSP to subsidize the bid, the bid is its own entity, DSP simply works for the bid. But we, whatever it costs to do the level of service that the bid broadly wants to do, that's what it costs. And so that means if the assessments have to go up to do it, you can't have one without the other. And so I just wanted to confirm once again, that the bid governance, especially if we figure out how to make it a more democratic governance, they can determine what service they want, but they do have to pay the cost of it. And really, the bid was giving downtown business owners the ability to essentially assess themselves, to get the level of service that they wanted, so that their customers and employees would feel safe, and they could thrive. So it was really a, an option that they voted to have, and that's great, but that has to be. So I don't think it's fair to place Mark and his team in the position of you have to do something for nothing. So I just want to make that clear, that when we start talking about expanding the bid, or paying people more, or getting training, it sounds like a version of crisis intervention training for the ambassadors would be great, all those things that cost money, they're just the cost of, of running a bid. So I just wanted to make that point. But, Mark, I'll, I'll turn it, we don't, really don't have much time, either you or Roy want to say anything, I think the conversation is going in the direction you like, so I don't know that you need to do much advocacy, but if you want to say some words, either one of you, that's great.
Well, Roy, if I could just maybe make one point for the sake of brevity here, and then, and then allow Roy to, Roy to close us out, is, first of all, we're grateful for everything you just said. I think the only challenge here is with this bid expansion, and it's the same discussion we had last year, is just given the current condition of that area, which is straddled, as you know, with the highest concentration of housing for the homeless, and services for the homeless, number of nonprofits caring for folks that are in the most need in our community, that, that it's, it's going to take a higher ratio of staffing for the first two years, in our professional opinion, to get them stabilized, and to get the culture changed. And, and that's the only reason why we're proposing, in terms of the bid expansion, that we, we could use your help. If we were to charge what we need to charge in order to get that staffing level, we'd have to charge those customers two and a half times what we're currently charging customers in an outer zone, a comparable zone, where we're only providing clean and safe services. Because as you might recall, the core, the center here in the retail market, we actually already charge them more, because we're providing that programming piece, and a lot of the marketing for retail. So that's our, that's my biggest concern there, is just how do we close the gap? And then also, I will send you some information, I'd like to share with you what our process is for how we go through the vacancy, replacing and recruiting board members from our existing bid customers. Firstly, I want to make sure you fully understand, we feel like it's a very democratic process, but if you're not comfortable, at the end of the day, I respect that, and I'd like to at least share with you what we're doing, to make sure that you, you understand the efforts that we go through, frankly, to recruit from every nook and cranny in the bid, to apply for these vacancies. But with that, I'll just thank you all very much, and then pass it to Roy for any closing remarks.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, very good job, bringing members of the council. You know, I would like to thank you for your, what I do as a partnership, and coming at a, arriving at a good conclusion. And we look forward to working with, it looks like, Mr. Richmond, and, you know, finalizing the contract.
Great. Well, thank you all for the, the work, it's really, I felt like it's been a very positive engagement, and improving things for everyone. And yes, Mark, send us that, again, I just don't think we're that aware of what the process is, and my understanding, again, is that there's kind of two, there's an advisory board, and then there's an actual, very small board, and so that's, again, most of us weren't that, well, we weren't here when this was set up, and the last contract was five years ago, so only some of us were here. I was barely new enough to even know what was going on. So yeah, we'll, we'll look at that. And so, next steps are, we'll probably convene our little work group again, to confirm some of the conversation that came out of here, and then meet with James Richmond, and then we'll just start that process. And again, I think we're well on our way, we have, there was a July 1st deadline, but that deadline was just to whether or not the bid would continue, and there's no, no doubt in anyone's mind that that is. So I think last time, we signed the contract in October, so I think we'll be ahead of that. With that, we'll excuse anybody here on bid, and I'm going to turn it over to Maran, to tee up a conversation on Housing Action Plan.
Thank you very much.
Yes, good morning, good morning, council. Maran Mercy here with planning, and just going to share a brief overview of where we are with the draft Housing Action Plan, and then hopefully, as council president stated, have some time for discussion or questions. We do anticipate a follow-up study session later this month or early next month, and so we can kind of think about what else you want to discuss at that point as well. So, I'm going to quickly get this started. And I know we've, we've talked quite a bit about the draft Housing Action Plan so far, but did just want to go over a reminder of our process and where we're at. So we did start this last year, and with forming some stakeholder groups, project team, and identified our housing needs and data collection, and so that was a big focus of the process over the summer and the fall. And we have a housing needs assessment that we produced as part of that. Following that, we had some discussions around policy solutions, and series of workshops with both the Plan Commission and City Council. And then for the last couple of months, we've been working to develop the draft plan, and we released that in mid-May for public review, and then just finished up with a workshop and public hearing with the Plan Commission. So ultimately, the draft Housing Action Plan will come before you all for consideration of adoption by resolution, and we're still anticipating that we'll get through that within the next couple of weeks to a month or so, hopefully. I do just want to mention that we've, of course, been working with the community stakeholders, city staff, elected officials throughout this process. We've been building engagement over the last year, a couple points there. We have a project page that we've been keeping up to date to host information and materials. In the fall, we had a lot of internal discussions with staff, as well as our numerous boards, commissions, council. We had a Housing Action Plan Working Group, that consisted of about 70 representatives from community organizations, builders, nonprofit, housing advocates, realtors, faith-based organizations, different community members, agency partners, so we have all of those materials online. And then we also had a series of community surveys last fall, or winter, to the beginning of this year, on housing experiences and issues, as well as a survey on the housing industry professionals. So again, all of these materials are online, and we've been trying to keep that as, as updated as possible. Which brings us to our Draft Housing Action Plan, this is just an image of our cover, and as you know, we've been working on this to provide policy guidance for staff, elected officials, decision-makers, to better meet Spokane's current and future housing needs for residents of all income levels. And the purpose is to promote greater housing diversity, affordability, and access to opportunity. So we do have our website with the Draft Housing Action Plan available to download there. We also have, again, all those project materials, and then we have a video, which I, I won't show today, but there's about a three-minute video that kind of goes over, over this, and provides sort of a nice overview, as well as an introduction to the, to the priorities and strategies. And with that, there are a number of appendices, and these are really tied to some of the key deliverables that we've had throughout the process. And so this is, each one goes into the different components, a lot more detail, the housing needs assessment, we also did a lot of additional data analysis, we looked at our housing policy framework, of course, our summary of community engagement, conducted our displacement risk analysis, which was kind of a first for the city to look at displacement risk, understand what areas in our city might be at risk, what members of the community might be at risk, and how we can integrate that into the Draft Housing Action Plan. We have a proposed monitoring program, and then following discussions with the Plan Commission, we created a glossary of terms as well. So that is all available for more in-depth reading. So just really quickly, going over the priorities at a high level, our priority A in the Draft Housing Action Plan, we have four priorities, so the first one is looking at increasing housing supply options and affordability for all incomes. And this is really looking at the availability of housing options, and encouraging the construction of both affordable and market-rate housing. This might be of particular interest, we're looking at options to address housing supply, actually seeing zoning and land use changes, development of affordable housing, accessory building units, those are some of the strategies and areas that this priority focuses on. There's also a particular discussion around missing middle housing types, which includes diverse housing options, and sort of looking at how we can further encourage different housing options throughout the city. Priority B focuses on existing housing affordability and quality, and this is building from a lot of discussions that have happened over the last couple of years in the city, and also feedback from the stakeholders, that not just about building new housing, but how do we maintain our current housing? So we have discussions in parent code enforcement, tenants' protection, rental housing, and really trying to support people where they live, and make sure there's access to safe, affordable housing choices. Priority C is looking Priority C is looking at equitable access to housing and homeownership. And this is seeking to understand and considering the historic context that has contributed to patterns of inequity and also encourage the city to break down barriers to accessing housing. So not just that there is housing, but how are people accessing housing and making sure that people have those options and the barriers are removed for that. And also discussion of how to move people into homeownership if that is desired. This priority also looks at expanding the displacement risk assessment, knowing that that was kind of a first step and first kind of baseline analysis into displacement. So how can we further deepen this understanding and consider policy decisions around that? And then our last priority focuses on the supporting housing initiatives across the region, knowing that the housing market, while we're talking about the city, Spokane is of course much larger than the city. And there's a lot of different factors at play. And so how can the city continue to support and be a part of that regional discussion? Just a point that these are policy guidance and everything in here are recommendations. And so if each action is taken, it will be subject to its own public process of review and adoption. And it's also really providing a spectrum of ideas. We know there's been a lot of conversations around what the city could do. And so we wanted to capture those and provide not just planning and land use discussions, but also around programming and how we can support residents as well. So just a quick overview of the adoption process that we've been working through. As I said, we put out the draft plan in like early, mid-May. And since then, we've been gathering public comments, working through the Plan Commission process. We had two workshops and then hosted a series of online open houses. And then we had a public hearing at the end of May. And I shared the public comments that we received prior to that point with City Council as well. And then following the public hearing, we are moving into the City Council process. And so that's where we are today. The public comments, we're accepting public comment all throughout this process. And then again, there's opportunities for public testimony at any upcoming public hearing with City Council as well. So a little bit about the Plan Commission public hearings and findings. Again, we had a public hearing on May 26. And we received 23 written comments in advance of that. And then we had three people sign up for public testimonies. And I forwarded the comments we received that were in the public record for the Plan Commission public hearing to you all earlier this week. They continued their deliberations at the meeting yesterday. And then finally, did make the motion and recommend the Draft Housing Action Plan to City Council for further consideration. So we'll be finalizing those Plan Commission findings soon. And then we'll, of course, be including those in any upcoming agenda packet that we get to you all. So up next, as we continue on this process, have our study session today, looking at a tentative one for July 1 as well. More opportunity to dig in. And then following that, and following the council's lead, we'll look at working with you all to identify when a public hearing might be set up and hopefully getting that adoption by resolution. So again, just where City Council discussion today, really just trying to get an overview on the process and understand any questions or things that we might want to bring back to you all as we keep talking about housing and look at what's in the Draft Housing Action Plan and what might be next steps for City Council. And then again, just encouraging ongoing public comment with the Spokane Housing Plan at SpokaneCity.org. That's the most direct way to submit to public comments. And we're accepting those throughout the process. And we'll, of course, forward any additional comments that we receive to you all as well. Our website again. And then we do, can accept public comments in writing, of course. And then, as I mentioned, the public testimony at any upcoming public hearing. So it's a quick overview. And I wanted to turn it back to you all for questions and discussion.
All right. Questions, comments from people?
And I can bring up the plan too, if we wanted to begin anything, but just wanted to give that high overview.
Yeah. I saw Councilmember Cathcart's hand first and then Councilmember Mum after that.
Yeah, thank you. First and foremost, I just want to thank Maran for all of her work on this. I know it's been a long, arduous process. And I've gotten to be pretty overzealous on some of these issues and probably come across a little angrily at times. So I apologize for that if that has been your takeaway. But I really do have appreciated all the work and time that you've put into this. And I also appreciate, I think, the idea that's come forward to kind of do some prioritization from council's perspective in terms of what the solutions will be that we might want to prioritize and address first and foremost and kind of rise up to the higher level there. The one thing I would like to see is just some kind of a, it could be a note, it could be just a complete change, I'm open. But something referencing the needs assessment that just kind of suggests that there could be a greater need than is in the document to date. And I think that that's important for just future councils and future planning and a lot of different things. So hopefully, there's council members open to some kind of modification to that piece of this. But I think that's the biggest thing that I'd like to bring forward and address before we pass this. So thank you, and thank you again, Maran.
Councilmember Mum.
Hi there, Maran. I just have to say, this is great. I know it's taken a long time and COVID was interrupting, but managing 70 different stakeholders? First of all, congratulations to you on that in the midst of a pandemic. And to that point, I want to point out, I have read every single one of those public comments. There is a wide variety of them in there. And the one I really want to call out today is this fabulous letter from the Department of Commerce and Benjamin Sur, congratulating the city of Spokane and you and the team that worked on this for such an outstanding Housing Action Plan. And I want to read this one part. "It goes beyond the required HAP goal to address equity and understanding that meeting housing needs will take partnerships and a regional approach." That's a pretty glowing comment in a Department of Commerce letter. And to say you not only met the requirements of the grant, but you exceeded it in those areas. And the other piece of that letter that I thought was important was the measurement or monitoring piece that they suggested at the end of it. They said, "Just make sure that we do have those goals monitored as we go across." And so in looking at the number of, I want to, I'm just going to throw it out there, it's like 6,800 homes needed in the next 15 years. Does that sound about right? That's about 450 homes a year, or units, needed in the city of Spokane. I think our permits are showing that that is right in that target area. And I think it would be important for the community to understand how many permits are coming through for these units, what the projections are, and you know, what type in terms of the monitoring piece. And that might be something that would help us meet the Department of Commerce goal to show the actual numbers instead of just saying, you know, "We have a crisis, we need more." Because when we have too much, and council president and I and another council member serve on the growth management steering committee, elected officials, and that's when it starts costing a lot of number of what we anticipate and how many units to build. So I just thought I'd mention that. That was one thing I saw in the letter that we might want to add to the plan is how do we intend to monitor? Thank you.
Other council comments, questions? I have a couple. So one thing I was struck, we've been calling this the Housing Action Plan, but I don't necessarily see a lot of action embedded in it in terms of timelines and things like that. And so it seems like more of a report with options than actual, an actual plan yet. And so I, one, I just wanted to get your take on that, Maran, if that seems to be kind of how it is. And then secondly, I've talked to just about every council member now about the report and the specifics and ideas. And I think we're considering, as part of our response, putting in some timelines and resources that we need to do and some prioritizations of those strategies that you've identified as potential. And I'm just, and we would, if we did that, you know, we would have to give the public plenty of notice that this is what we're thinking of and plenty of time for further comment and engagement before we adopted a revised plan, something similar to what we're looking at at the downtown plan. And I'm just wondering, I throw this open to you or Tyrell or Lewis or James. Is that, you know, is that, does that work within the structures that you're under as far as GMA and the grant requirements and things like that?
Yeah, this plan has a table in the back that was to be the kind of the first discussion items we wanted to have with council, Plan Commission, and the mayor to see which ones we want to put on a fast track and which ones may take a longer period of time. Some of them may be things that the administration can do outright or bring forward as far as fee structure on a few of the short plat process, for example. There may be other code changes that we want to have alignment with council that we'll be bringing forward this year sooner rather than later. And then there are some things that are mentioned that'll be a longer conversation with the community that may be comprehensive plan amendment. Those are kind of the different packages. We were working under a pretty tight deadline for this grant. And so that's why that, we knew we weren't going to be able to have enough time to vet all of those conversations with the broader community and yourself to come up with a prioritized list. And that's meant to happen with the adoption of this and pick up right away. The adoption of the downtown plan and the Housing Action Plan frees up departmental resources to immediately dive back into these subjects. So we're looking forward to that. And I think that the list that you're working on is going to be a great starting point.
Okay.
Can I add too? I think the list that you're working on could be another resolution if that was the will of the council or of course, you could add that into the adoption of the Housing Action Plan. But I believe you could adopt, do the plan and then another more work program sort of resolution.
Great. And we've been sort of experimenting with the downtown plan. So everyone's going to see shortly a resolution that Nathan's worked up that reflects our thing. And I really appreciate the planning team and legal working with some of us who still feel like newcomers to land use procedures. I had another question that a council member raised for me. And that is, you know, there's always the sense from laypeople, at least outside the business, that it takes forever to do anything in land use, just the way state law is set up. But if there was a declaration of a housing crisis, what, does that impact how long things take? Or like, there's a couple of things I know of. One, of planning or Plan Commission process. And then also that rule that you can only make comp plan changes once a year. I'm just wondering if some kind of formal declaration, does that give us any fast-track ability? And if anyone, either Lewis or James or both want to address that?
Yeah, Jim Richmond, you're under GMA. The City Council can amend the comprehensive plan more frequently if there's an emergency.
Okay.
And there's also a provision under GMA that allows the City Council to adopt interim zoning ordinances on an emergency basis.
Okay.
Similar to the process that we go through in adopting moratorium.
Okay.
And those are generally only in effect for six months unless you have a work program in place. And the work program would be presumably to look at and go through the regular land use amendment process that will involve the Plan Commission and stakeholders, et cetera. And so there are some options available for fast-tracking solutions.
All right. Thanks, that's helpful to know.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Mum.
I believe there's also another one, and Mr. Richmond, you can amend me if not. But neighborhood plans, neighborhoods, they have the ability to do it at any time. So if we were going to do, say, a sub-area plan or a plan around North Town that we've talked about, or other areas of the city that have been waiting for their center of planning, that does not, that can happen at any time.
Correct. The initial adoption of a sub-area plan can be adopted anytime. Correct.
Great. All right. Just trying to get all the tools that are in our kit, whether we know they're there or not. That's awesome. Other questions or comments? It's, I mean, today is mostly about process and understanding it, but anything is fair go. You've got your expert, subject matter experts here. But anything else anyone wants to know about this? All right. I'm not seeing, yeah, go ahead, Maran.
Well, I'll just quickly respond as well. I know you asked a question directly to me as well. And just in addition to what Lewis was sharing, you know, the format of a Housing Action Plan is a new, is a new type of plan, a new tool in Washington State. And so, well, it's not a new concept overall. Many states and many jurisdictions, particularly larger ones, do have Housing Action Plans. And we looked at a lot of ones, you know, Denver, Boston, Philadelphia, a lot of really big cities have them. So I just raised that because as we were doing the plan, you know, Commerce is providing guidance, kind of tangential. And so I think it's, this provides a really good, high-level overview of the broad spectrum of ideas. And as we continue to refine the Housing Action Plan or look at implementation, you know, over the next couple of years, we can sort of fine-tune what that might look like in the future. And I think a lot of cities are kind of approaching that as well. And so it was both a learning, you know, learning for everybody involved. A lot of the jurisdictions were sort of at the same point in each throughout their process. And I think that there'll be opportunities to, you know, go back and kind of look at how this can respond to other conversations going forward. So I think that it's, I like that it presents both planning as well as programming and takes that larger look at it. And it was a really good opportunity internally to work across departments. And so I think that was really valuable in aligning discussions and understanding, you know, what's code enforcement doing with housing? What is CHHS doing with housing? We even had, you know, integrated capital. And so just all of those was sort of the behind-the-scenes thing that staff were working on that really lended to a multidisciplinary approach. And I think that was really valuable too, to get us to where we're at.
Yeah. Councilmember Stratton?
I'm just curious. So the, the, Council President, we have a large group outside of this that's working on housing and the funding that's coming in. So is this action plan, is this going to be their foundation? Are they going to have this information as they start looking at opportunities and that type of thing? Is that how this mixes, kind of melds together?
Well, that's a great question or point to raise. So our Housing Action Subcommittee is brand new. They've only had one meeting. So I'm anticipating that we'll ask them to digest this and get back to us as well. So yeah, I think that will be the part of the thing, that the purpose of them is to...
I was just trying to, in my mind, figure out if we have any clashes, what do we do?
Yeah. Well, the way I, this is just me, but the way I view them is they're advisory to City Council. So we get their best thinking, just like we got the Sustainability Plan that had many things we agreed with and some things that probably none of us agree with, that's just feedback for us. But what's great is to get them involved and get that broad feedback so that we have it, as opposed to doing it without it. So I anticipate that they will meet again before we have to do anything formal. They're still organizing. In the longer term, I would imagine they would have one or more subgroups that would work on it. They probably will have a landlord-tenant subgroup. They'll have, probably have a land use change subgroup. They'll have a affordable housing subgroup. I'm just imagining if they're like the sustainability group. So how quickly they all get set up and, you know, what feedback. But we'll definitely invite them for feedback, either as the whole group or individuals in the group. So I think that's a great point you raise. And we'll make sure that Melissa carries that to them. that to them. So, yeah. Tyrell.
I just wanted to confirm that one more study session would be helpful to you.
I think so. I think so. I don't know if we'll have any specific feedback for you of, you know, 20 things that we think should be fast tracked and how, or something like that, and ideas. I think one of the things that we're going to want to know maybe at the next session is, all right, what does it take to do? Like, do we need, how many more planners do we need? How many more permit reviewers do we need? What kind of, what's some, on ADUs, if we're going down that road, what are the things? So I think it's a, it's a little bit, if we can try to come up with some things that most of us agree on that we want to pursue, I think it would be helpful to hear from you all. Again, as Maron says, you've been doing it cross-departmentally, that to go, okay, well, that's great that you want to change that, but this is what it takes to do it. So I think that's part of the thing. Right now, it seems like it's such an elephant to take apart, and I don't, you know, we're not really hearing from council members today, well, I want you to focus on, you know, 3.3, what is that? But I'm hoping that perhaps we will have narrowed down a bit to 20 or so things that are of our highest priority of the majority of us and that we'll see. I've shared with everybody on council that I think our council breakdown of who favors what and how is a little different on this issue than most issues that we deal with. And so it's, it's not very predictable. So it should be an interesting conversation. And I also just wanted to commend Maron and the team for really getting this done at light speed, as far as I'm concerned, on typical planning, land use kinds of things. And so you've really done a great job. And I think traditionally, local government has not been expected to do much about housing in our country as opposed to Europe. Government doesn't do much about housing, period. And then at local government, especially not. And, you know, the entire Northwest and West Coast and other places in the country are having these same market forces that are just overwhelming us, and it's really a challenge. And so to imagine that one city can figure out the housing crisis is, you know, that's a high charge and really outside of our thing. But that said, I've been telling people, we're hearing from constituencies all across the political spectrum, City Council, please do something. And so we'll rise, we'll rise to that challenge as best we can. But as Maron says, we are a bit making it up as we go, although there's some great tools and concepts out there. So it's, it's challenging and it's exciting. But the one thing I know, almost everyone agrees on that I've heard is, we need to do something faster. So I think that's what you're going to hear from us, is like, well, it's great to have the menu, but how are we going to get it served in the next three months? You know, essentially is what we're being told. And I don't know how much we can do in three months, or six months, or even a year. But the more we can get done, the more relief we can bring to our community members. So lots more to come. And unless...
Council President.
Yes.
Candace Mum has been patiently waiting.
I haven't seen her hand, I'm sorry.
Her arm is getting tired.
Okay, I can't see her hand. Councilmember Mum.
That's okay, technology. I just wanted to put in, because Tyrell and Maron brought this up, and to your point, I think it'd be really helpful, and Lewis also weigh in, for the next feedback, if in the Housing Action Plan, you could identify sort of what an estimated timeline would be on some of those strategies, like this would take a year, or this would be, you know, a short-term project, you know, give us a six-month or, you know, one-year or two-year outlook about what it would take to get it done. And then the other thing, and I might have mentioned this before, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself, but it'd be very helpful if we would do targeted units per strategy. I know there's a lot of energy around ADU, but the last I heard from the Planning Department is their estimate is they get about 10 requests a year. They might see 20 or 30 with a change. So I think that's important for us to understand is that we can work on ADUs, but is it going to really give us the number of units? Maybe it will over time. It could, you know, 30 a year or 10 years is 300. But there might be other strategies that we could do more quickly that would deliver us more units. And I think that would help us with prioritizing, especially, you know, folks who haven't had a lot of time spent in planning or building, to understand that if you make this change, it's going to take this many years and/or this is how many units we could potentially expect out of this change. And we won't hold you to it, but just an estimate would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Kinnear.
To your point, Councilmember Mum, I did take that, I broke it into what Council President gave us of items. I broke it into A, B, and C, so short-term, middle-term, long-term. And I gave that to Lewis yesterday. So maybe that's a starting point for him because it was a very rough draft of what I thought would be a first priority that could get done quickly, and then something that could get done in six months to a year, and then longer than a year. So Lewis, and I don't have an ego attached to it, so if you wanted to just take that and refine it to the best of your ability, because you have more knowledge than we do, that might be your starting point.
And that could also help us with that monitoring piece that the Department of Commerce was looking for from us, is how to see how we're accomplishing and what we're working on. Because I would hate to see us do a whole lot of work on a big project and then it not have the outcome we were really anticipating. And we could have done something else that would have gotten us there quicker and housed more people.
Yep. Councilmember Stratton.
Two questions. First, Candace, are you driving and talking?
I'm being driven, but thank you.
Okay. You're an expert. You haven't crashed. Good for you. So I don't know if, I don't know if this is an appropriate question for this conversation, but since I'm here, is there any way to get, so as I think about housing, planning, all of this, there's the big debate between, do we need more multifamily, more single-family? Is there data out there that says in the next five years, we're going to run out of single-family homes? Or does anybody have that information that can kind of, we can put beside those arguments? Because every time I think, okay, it definitely, we need more multifamily. And then somebody will say to me, you know, no, there's not enough single-family homes in this area. Well, how do we know that? I mean, if there's even...
The realtors have that information, Councilmember Stratton. They'll tell you the inventory of single-family housing is almost zero. It's really low.
But I'd like to hear it from somebody other than the realtors. Is there, I mean, is there a, is there a group out there that does research on this that, I don't know?
We can bring back a compilation at the countywide level at our next meeting and go over some of the numbers.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for, yeah.
Yeah.
Been a little, okay. Lewis, you're perfect, thank you.
And our housing needs assessment does look into this a little bit, and that's where the idea of the missing middle housing types. I think many people would say all types, you know, we could use all types of housing, but even within the city of Spokane, only 9% of our current housing is attached housing. And so there's, that's where there may be some opportunities for that between single-family and between the multifamily, the smaller scales. And there are some demographic changes that could support that with older homeowners might wanting to downsize, or, you know, entry-level home buyers looking for, you know, not their, their huge forever home, but like, how do we help feed into kind of that housing ladder? And so those are some of the concepts in the plan. And so we have some data as well that we could share from the needs assessment around that.
Thank you. That's what I'm looking for, is just a, a way to look and compare and see where we're going and where we'll be in two, two to five years. Thanks.
The other thing I was just going to add to that, and then I'll get to Councilmember Wilkerson. I was on Association of Washington Cities' call today, and some of the mayors were really talking about, well, it's not just the units, it's, do people have enough income to afford them? So if you had plenty of income, you might choose to live in a multifamily condominium, or you might choose to, but do you have a choice? And part of the challenge that complicates this is people just don't have, they don't have the choice because of their income, not necessarily the missing unit. So that has to get factored in. And again, that's something way out of the realm of the control over local government. But again, people are going to demand us to deal with those things. So I just wanted to raise that. But Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm just going to comment that this is a new arena for me, but I'll play my hand. I'm the one who's asked, can we have a housing emergency to really trigger new ideas and new opportunities to go forward? So thank you, James, for that little bit of information. That gives me some ideas to move forward on. So I just want the community to know that we hear you and that we need housing at all price points in our community.
Yep. Other thoughts from anyone today? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just a last comment while I'm thinking about it. I was looking at a past homelessness plan that I think came out in 2013, maybe. And in the plan, it referenced that at the time, we had a 4.6% vacancy for rentals. And it referred to that as being unhealthy and something that we needed to look at. And I think the last number I saw is, we're at about a 0.6 or a 0.8% rental vacancy rate today, which, you know, we're what, six, seven years down the road from then, and we're still trying to grapple with this issue. So I think it just highlights just, you know, it's getting worse and worse as we move forward. And hopefully, with some of the solutions presented in this and that we'll hopefully be prioritizing, we'll be able to start to tackle some of those issues. And I saw Councilwoman Kinnear just talked about, or put up the numbers on, on the low inventory of a single-family. And that's, that's obviously another, another big issue, which is why we've got to look at, look at everything across the board. So just thought I'd throw that out there.
I also wanted just to point out, a lot of, there's a lot of debate about single-family, but it, you can define single-family in all different ways. So it could be one detached unit on one parcel, or it could be duplexes. That could be single-family too. So, you know, it just depends on how you do it. And some places that say they've gotten rid of single-family zoning, they didn't get rid of single-family zoning, they just changed the definition to it. So it doesn't mean the difference between one house and a three-story apartment building. There's a lot of things in between. And it's, as Maron mentioned, it's those in-betweens that would be affordable and attainable for people just getting into the market. And that's what's missing any time. I think it was yesterday that they showed the median house price had increased by something like 50% in the last year. And you're just like, no way our income's doing that. So it is a crisis, I think. And what legal tools we have, Councilmember Wilkerson, we will further explore. We were given some encouragement there, I think, today. So we'll explore that. So, okay. Well, thanks, everyone, for your attention. I'm not going to be there at next Monday's meeting. Councilmember Mum is going to be exercising her powers as Council President pro tem. So good luck to you, Councilmember Mum. Practice your cat herding over the weekend. So, all right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good week. Take care. And if you can, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.